Call order. City Bender Commission meeting, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Black's look, please.
Thank you.
Lisa roll call.
Commissioner Langrea?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here.
Commissioner Mento was unable to attend. The open public meetings announcement pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website. A live streaming notice, the city provides live streaming of its meetings and allows public comment via remote access. Any person who attempts to disrupt the meeting will be denied access. If technology issues make remote access unavailable, the meeting will continue. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at its discretion.
Thank you. Uh, there are no presentations tonight. There are no department head reports or Capitol discussions tonight. Uh, following items are scheduled for action during the regular portion of the meeting following this workshop. Minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty four meeting will be approved. And introduction of the following ordinance. Tom and Nicole, would you mind summarizing?
Sure.
The introductions.
On for tonight, we will have the first reading and introduction only by of ordinance twenty twenty four dash fourteen, which amends the construction code fees to add an administrative fee for a private onsite inspection. Um, the the fee will be twenty five percent, which is what's permitted under the statute. Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifteen amends chapter two seventeen dash twenty two of the city code regarding driveway, no parking areas. This would be a change to the current practice whereby the city will now um make the driving workouts for no parking zones in front of driveways. Currently, the residents are doing that, and in order to be more uniform, the city is going to um put together an application that residents can uh file with the city to have that done by the city, and the application fee will be twenty five dollars. Twenty twenty four dash sixteen names a new street in the city. Uh, the street is adjacent to Ventnor Plaza coming off of Wellington. It's between the Dollar General and uh Provenza. That name of that street will be known as Osprey Place. And twenty twenty four dash seventeen amends ordinance twenty twenty three dash fourteen with regards to charging for electric vehicles. This would add a surcharge for leaving your vehicle longer than the time allotted. Uh, the surcharge would be twenty five dollars, and depending on where you are, the amount of time you're allowed to be there is either four hours or one hour as provided by the ordinance.
Okay. Couple comments on a couple.
Yeah, I asked you, Commissioner Langrea, if you have any questions or comments on.
Just just a couple of comments. So the the parking of driveways, the triangular shaped things that on either side to keep people from parking too close. What's gonna happen now is Public Works will paint them out in application through the code office. And then, right, code office, we didn't, we didn't dump that on Lisa, right?
Yes. Yeah, the application.
And then that'll go to uh Public Works.
Raise your hand.
And the whole, uh, you're lucky you weren't, you're here, because um, that'll go to Public Works to do the painting. Um, the second one is Osprey Place. Um, can't not mention Kathy, it was her idea to name it, because the osprey nest is at the end of the the street, and Tom was in favor of that, because he's a Stockton grad. Had a conversation with Alex Marino. Um, if the dates line up, we will have Talon here, which is their osprey mascot for Stockton.
That's great.
Just something fun. When we put the sign up, we'll do, you know, do a little thing, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
They were actually very happy to see that, because it's their local college, so kind of fun. But that was fun. I talked to Alex this morning, and he was, he was cool with it, so.
Great idea. Glad to hear. Um, and I'm so glad to hear about the um, the driveway, kind of, kind of organizing that. There's always, we get a number of calls from people that don't understand how to follow the instructions, or it seems awkward to be putting that kind of a D I Y thing in their hands, so I think this will keep things a lot, a lot.
Agreed.
Um, so uh, moving on with the workshop portion, the public hearing on ordinances, there are none this evening. Um, there are a number of resolutions to be adopted in the consent agenda. These will be voted on during the regular meeting. Um, we'll do the same thing. Uh, I'll go through them, and then if you have any questions or comments. Yeah, all right?
Yep.
Um, so there is a group of tax abatements, resolutions, uh, twenty twenty four, one oh six through one sixty six. We had one, one sixty, one sixty, I'm sorry, through one sixty six. Um, one sixty seven is refund of a building permit. One sixty eight approves the permanent appointment of Amy Winterbottom and um.
We were having this problem last night in twenty four, too. I understand Jim's working on getting all these replaced. Check, check. There was one that had. Looking.
Yes. Um. We have um. So we were uh, we're at uh, resolution one sixty nine to seventy are budget amendments adding uh special revenue items with offsetting appropriations. We have one seventy one authorized seasonal employment in Public Works. Uh, one seventy two and seventy three are refunds for pickleball players. One seventy four, seventy five, and seventy six are licorice renewals of existing liquor licenses. Uh, one seventy seven authorized application to the P D P for infrastructure trust. Uh, one seventy eight is amendment to resolution having to do with our application for funding on the lead service line replacement project through New Jersey I Bank. This increases phase one from ten thousand to million, excuse me, sorry, ten million up to twenty million. Uh.
Sorry, I apologize.
One seventy nine, first to financing for the lead service agreement um, replacement project. One eighty authorized the city, the city to participate in cooperative purchasing system up with the safe valley sewage commission. All these are kind of related. Uh, thanks for that. One eighty one authorized the city to participate in educational services for a commission cooperative purchasing group. One eighty two amends resolution one fifty three and clarifies contract with the laws of society. Uh, including construction management and inspection services for the boardwalk construction project. One eighty three is resolution clarifying the authority commission has received the annual audit. Um, we'll get into that as well uh, for twenty twenty three and have minimum and at the minimum review the comments and recommendations section. One eighty four is another license approval. One eighty five authorizes shared service agreement with an asset of longage for legal services in opposition to the offshore wind project. One eighty six is related to those offshore wind projects and supports Atlantic County Executive and Commissioner sending efforts. One eighty seven is a licorice approval. One eighty eight approves professional service contract with Ed Stinson L L C. One eighty nine authorized seasonal and part-time employment. We are.
One, we're actually.
Hold that, hold that one.
A couple.
Okay, so we are pulling one eighty nine. One ninety authorized agreement with Atlantic Electric replacing non-advertised banners, city facilities halls, and one ninety one is the last of the licorice approvals for this ramp. Commissioner Langrea, do you have any comments or questions? Yes. Resolutions, we have one.
Did you give him an updated one? Because we have resolutions one ninety two through one ninety six.
Can I have them on?
Yeah. I think.
Okay, I have it. Uh, one ninety two is appointing class three member to the planning board. Langrea, one ninety three uh, is vending resolution appointing the planning boards for the year of twenty twenty four. Uh, one ninety four is refunding a pickleball membership fee. One ninety five is a uh, the last of the licorice renewals for uh, transfer and uh, location opening up. And one ninety six is licorice renewal, that's one. Is that right?
That's all.
Yeah, because just, just some updates really or comments on, on some of the reasons. So one seventy nine is the uh, increasing from ten million to twenty million.
Yeah.
Um, the reason for that is fifty percent of that is eligible to be forgiven. So we're gonna spend, we're hoping not spending our money, we're hoping we're spending state and federal money to do this lead line service replacement. The more we put into that first phase, we've expanded the first phase from the ten million dollar project to basically double that. That's where we can get ten million that forgiven, that's a loan, uh, over a good time of that. That's, that's the reason I would recommend it to us by that entity that's helping us with this. I'm gonna have to tomorrow.
Yeah, just, just kind of wish our findings, we want to apply when we're still eligible for the maximum amounts of principal forgiveness. Uh, as economic conditions continue to improve here, in the future, we may not be eligible for that.
Right.
So we really wanted to get that all locked in place now.
Okay. Um.
One eighty three, I know we can just read through them real quick, but this. Kudos to Amy on this one. This is our audit, and our rating has been maintained, we think, at a plus. Maria knows more about this, and she's sorry she couldn't be here, because she was gonna stand up and cheer. Um, but great job by, by yourself, Leon, and our, our financial team, just doing a great job on that. And you were, basically, too, but wait till the end, but, but really great job on this. This is, this keeps us where we're at, and, and with the ability to do things we want to do. So we appreciate that. Um, the other two on one eighty five, one eighty six, this deals with the offshore. And I thought I was gonna be not be here tonight, and I do apologize. I have a hard stop at five thirty, so that's why this meeting was moved to this time. I have a prior commitment out of town, and Mr. Mento is, is ill, so we, we did have to move this for, for my, uh, going to attempt. Um. So I can not read the first sentence for apologizing for not being here. Um, do you want to share my support for several of the items on the agenda tonight? That's these two. My first, I fully support in hiring Ed Stinson back as an consultant city engineer. Uh, we want to bring him back. Uh, he did a great job for us in the past, and we look forward to um, having him assisting Ventnor in the future. Secondly, that both resolutions opposing offshore wind, as I've stated many times, were not opposed to alternative energy sources, but the projects as proposed and anticipated along our coast will bring an industrial type of use to our pristine shores. It's taken decades for our marine environment to recover from the dumping of trash and waste from New York State into the ocean. Now beautiful beaches without trash and dying marine life that littered our shores. These offshore turbines will turn what is a beautiful natural vista into a sea of spinning industrial windmills just a few miles off our beaches. These installations will require huge subsidies to make them economically feasible. Proof of that is the BPU drove Dorset forty million dollars to make sure that project worked. They even pulled out, they couldn't even make it with that subsidy. So there's a lot that's behind the curtains, which is not why people see. Um, I've asked them several times in public hearings on the projects, why can't these sewers be moved further offshore? Only receive notice, been able to answer in return. Simple reason why, it's costly. It'll cost them no money to put them down, leave them where they're further off our shores, because they have to. They can only run the cable so many feet, two thousand feet. So they have to build a box underneath the ocean. They don't wear the, just like that ocean box right around, they have to do that every two thousand feet. Um, costs too much for them to go beyond our, our views from our homes and beaches. Uh, first, for both funding, continued litigation, litigation, and then um, resolution opposing offshore. So that's my spiel on those. Uh, almost, almost all of the downed beach communities have signed it. Plague County, I believe Atlantic County is looking into, may have already passed a resolution opposing these uh, offshore projects. If that's. On these, these refunds of pickleball memberships, do we have, do we cap our membership?
I think these were extenuating circumstances.
They don't, this, this.
Where they needed.
Mike, these were, these are definitely, this is not related to, this is not related to.
Maybe that we had issues with one court for two weeks.
No, nothing, not related to that. We knew clearly we were not.
Okay. Is that? Just unplug that one.
Move next.
Move over next to Tom.
I knew there was one.
Plugs over. In this side. There we go.
Uh, we need detective.
Don't take your.
He moves back. No, it's a good call. It's not in charge of microphones. Not that anybody's fault, I shouldn't say that.
Well, but we, the issue with the courts was resolved, and I was at the record meeting, we kind of talked through it with that as well.
Good, that's good to hear. Um, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, so I will circle back again as well. Um, I want to thank um, on one seventy one, uh, uh, the seasonal employee is actually a, a client and friend of mine, Mario. I think he's gonna be a great catch for Public Works. He's a very thorough, thorough man from my experience. Um, uh, he was my boss as a client, so it'd be fun to be your boss. Um, the uh, uh, the resolution um, clarifying the Atlantic Electric non-advertising banners and polls. This is something that we've been uh, working with AC Electric on for probably six to eight months to get them to finally come through and give us the approvals for that. So we will now be working to get designs that um, we can all agree on for.
What polls are these?
These are downtown specific on Ventnor Avenue and Dorset Avenue, so these are non-advertised polls that will um, sort of signal our downtown.
Similar to what we did with, with.
Similar.
So what issue is that? Their, their advertisement for businesses?
These are not. These are gonna be, uh, these are gonna be welcome to vendor.
They shouldn't have any issues with that.
They're not. That's what this authorizes. So this is uh, this is that agreement.
Okay.
And we had to specify the right polls.
Right.
And the size and the location. And then I, I will circle back to one eighty three. Uh, Tom, did you have some, something you wanted to, or, or did you want to mention? Yeah, I saw some notes about the audit, because it is big news.
Well, there's actually two bits of financial news. One is, is the audit which you've received, and you're gonna, you uh, acknowledge tonight that you've read it, read at least the comments, uh, section, comments and recommendations. But the other thing, uh, I was gonna have, Amy was gonna speak to it when she does the bills and payroll.
I see.
But we can, we can mention now, we had a, a rating meeting, we're having a bond sale next week. And we had a rating meeting that Mayor was able to attend via Zoom with Standard and Poor's, that was a week or so ago. And as a result of that meeting, they issued their rating for the bonds and notes that we're gonna be selling. Double I on the bonds and the highest rating on the short-term notes of S P one. So two bits of good news. I will, congratulations to Amy for continuing to do a great job.
I thought that was all in the items, so I'm sorry for.
That's okay.
Going into that, but great job.
Yeah, thank you.
As, as the commercial says, you can't call people rock stars in the business world anymore, but she's a superstar. Billy doesn't want us calling people stars.
All right, so um, moving on, we have uh, approvals of bills and payroll, as mentioned. Uh, we'll have that during the regular meeting. Um, we have uh, discussion items. Do you have any items for discussion, Commissioner?
I do not. You know. All right. My commissioner comments there or discussion items?
Uh, it's up to you. I was, I have a couple items, you can both fill in that again.
We'll do them at the end.
Um.
Yeah, the way we have it set up, the, the general comments and reports from you guys would be at the end.
Right, that's what I thought, yeah.
Okay. So, um, having none, um, we will uh, need a motion to open for public comment.
Motion for public comment.
Second, please, sir, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Okay, the meeting's now open for public comments on any matters discussed and scheduled for adoption. Uh, general comments on matters not listed or discussed may be made during the public comment period in the regular meeting. Anyone wishing to, wishing, wishes to speak can come to the microphone, saying no in public here or um, on Zoom. Uh, state your name and address for the record. Jim, is anyone on Zoom raising their hand for public comment during the workshop session?
If anybody on Zoom wishes to speak on any of the items that have been discussed, please make yourself known by raising your hand within the chat feature. No.
Seeing none, motion to close public portion, public comment meeting in uh, the reg, in the uh, workshop.
So moved.
And uh, motion to, motion to open the regular meeting.
We'll move that as well.
Second.
Second. And.
Roll call on closing public.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Okay, uh, now call the regular meeting to order. Motion to adopt minutes from May ninth, twenty twenty four, regular meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Lisa, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash one, that's zero one four.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one four?
Second, Lisa can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty four dash one, that's, that's zero one five.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty, twenty twenty four, it says twenty fourteen on the agenda. Um, zero one five.
Zero one five. I'll second, Lisa, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. And I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one six.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Lisa, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one seven.
Second, Lisa can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. I have a motion, uh, so a public hearing on these ordinances will be June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. There are no public hearings on these ordinances tonight. Uh, I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda consisting of resolutions twenty twenty four dash one six zero to.
One nine six.
One nine six.
Without one eighty nine.
With exempting one eighty nine, omitting one eighty nine. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty four, one six zero through one nine six, with the exception of one eighty nine.
Second that, Lisa may have a roll.
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Okay, Amy, bills and payroll?
The payables for this period are nine hundred seventy three thousand and fifteen cents. Payrolls for this period, one million, three hundred eleven thousand, two hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, motion to adopt those in payroll.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Lisa can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
We'd like to report on the standard and program.
We got that, guys. All right, um. I will make a, need a motion to open the meet, the meeting to uh, public comment.
You want to do commissioner comments?
Uh, any commissioner comments? Oh, we do, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, we do have commissioner comments. Lan, um, Commissioner Langrea, if you have any commissioner comments?
Just a couple, um, Public Works and these guys are here, Ernie and, and Rick are here. Just great job getting the city ready. We were still not quite there to summer yet, so we got a few more weeks before we, we get uh, the masses arrive. A great job by, by the crew. Um, city's starting to take shape, and we're getting to where we need to be for, you know, the next couple of weeks when all the schools are out and everybody starts coming down here for the summer, so good job with that. Um, projects are that finished up, I guess, since our last meeting, for Monmouth Avenue, we finished that, those projects, Lafayette Avenue, just some punch list items there that we're, we're finishing up. Um, and we talked right before the hearing um, about the street ends on the boardwalk side of, of the streets. Um, that painting contractor should be in next week to ten days or so to start that. We marked out, they're ready for them to come in and start painting off the no parking zones at the street ends. Um, it's just a matter of getting them in here and actually doing the work. That's, that's all I have.
Um, I got a couple of things Commissioner Langrea mentioned that we're getting ready for the masses to arrive this week. And uh, tomorrow is the farmer's market at eight thirty, and next week really starts the full sort of weekend activities that we have. The farmer's market on Friday. Uh, next week, Saturday is the citywide yard sale at nine o'clock. Concert at Newport Avenue the same day, first concert in the new layout at five o'clock. Sunday is another day of city yard, citywide yard sale, where you don't have to pay, you can just um, conduct your own yard sale. I believe there's a map as well, right?
Uh, yeah, they're working on, I don't, I don't have a copy of it yet, but I understand that they're.
Very, very popular.
Yes.
And then uh, that Monday, so that's a big weekend, and the Monday is our first um, movie night at Ski Beach at six thirty, uh, which is Jaws. Which, I have, I have one uh, other thing that uh, the police, the fire chief brought to my attention today that I wanted to, to mention. Um, uh, we have a Lieutenant Jason Johnson, who was on um, at Station Two, and um, uh, there was a gentleman came um, who lives at uh, uh, in that area um, uh, near Marshall Court on Saturday, May eleventh, around eleven A M. He had symptoms that his right side was numb, and urgent care was, so this is eleven A M, urgent care was closed. He had no other way of um, uh, uh, he had no other caregivers with him or family members. The only thing you could think of was going to Station Two. Um, he rang, rang the doorbell. Uh, Lieutenant Jason, who's um, uh, Jason Johnson, who's um, uh, you know, also trained the E M T, invited him in, have a seat, they talked, asked him, he took his blood pressure, suggested he go to the hospital. After a few minutes, he agreed. Called for an ambulance, they took him to the hospital, and in fact, he was having a mini stroke. Um, so, um, so his, his, his actions, and then, and then um, led to him uh, having a, 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 a good outcome here. He also went back on his own time and checked, checked in after him and brought him home.
Good work by Lieutenant Johnson. Good fireman.
Yeah, um, so this, this gentleman was also a, a, a member of the Coast Guard Auxiliary, gave him a, a presentation and a coin.
Oh, nice, that challenge, cool.
Good challenge.
Something that we should always keep with you, can save you buying drinks.
How many do you have? How many do you have? This one.
I always with, I have one from chief, I have one from C O. Always keep one in your pocket.
Smart. Good stuff.
That's good. That's, congratulations to Lieutenant Johnson. He's, he's, like I said, he's a good fireman and an even better person, so good to hear.
Uh, so that uh, that is our uh, there's the comments. Um, I will open it up to.
One last thing, we wish Maria.
Oh, yeah.
No, she's struggling a little bit, so she'll be good, but.
Can I tell you something?
Sure.
I just would like to wish Tom a happy birthday tomorrow.
What?
Happy birthday to him.
So do I.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
We were not aware.
It's tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well, we won't see you tomorrow, so happy birthday.
Were you on the young side at the Rolling Stones concert?
I uh, I'm about average age. However, whatever, whatever Mick and Keith Richards are eating or drinking, I want some.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Really astonished.
Yeah.
That they can do what they do at their age, really.
Yeah, a lot of friends were up there for that show. Heard it was good.
Great. It's inspiring, I can keep going for another twenty years.
Excellent. But um, they're, they're all rock stars. Um, all right, motion to uh, open in public comment.
So moved.
Second, Lisa can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Langrea?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. We open this for public comment. Uh, this is now, anyone uh, not seeing anyone in the, in the chambers, anyone on Zoom, wanna uh, uh, open the comment for anything we've discussed or uh, anything at all?
If anybody on Zoom wishes to comment on any items, please make yourself known by raising your hand or within the chat feature.
Nanette has a question.
Nanette? Recognizing Nanette from Galloway? I'll start.
It's Nanette Galloway.
All right, Galloway.
Downbeat dot com.
Yeah, there's nobody raising their hand.
Okay.
She's got her hand up on the screen.
Not on mine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anybody on, on here raising their hand.
Yeah, isn't there a hand? Then we all seen a hand up?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right, not crazy.
We'll get, well, add a few more, another.
She was out. She was out.
Okay.
All right, motion proposed.
Uh, motion to close public comments.
I made a second. I was rushing you.
All right, um, Lisa can have a roll call.
Commissioner Langre.
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. We have, uh, no executive session, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Lisa.
Commissioner Langre.
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. You adjourn. Sorry, Nanette.